All right, this meeting is called to order at 8:09. I ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm going to give you the, if we must evacuate this room because of an emergency, there are two exits behind me. One to the right, one to the left. They exit onto the North Field. There are also exit doors as you leave the auditorium and go to your right. Those lead to the parking lot. I would like to compliment the principal and the staff on the excellent condition of the building. We had a chance to walk around before our exec session and want to thank the children who were here who gave us an incredible tour of the innovative learning spaces and showed us the incredible work that they're doing. So, kudos to the children and to Principal, Mr. Gray. And I want to thank the PTA for their refreshments that were provided during our executive session. They were yummy. Like refreshments. Okay. All right. The Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on December 14th, 2016 as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coles. Any comments, questions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasurers' report for the month of November 2016 as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, second by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to turn this over to our superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. I am actually going to turn this over to Mr. Gray. One of the things that we've done differently this year during board meetings is to allow our principals to share with the community the kinds of work that are going on in our buildings because there's so much tremendous work going on that it needs to be shared. So, Mr. Gray is going to be talking about the creative learning spaces that are, have been created in Plaza School and the kinds of work that are going on there. So, Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to show off all of the hard work that the teachers and the kids are putting into our new creative spaces. I would like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Kami and Nomi Rosen, who's been helping us put together our science curriculum, for helping principals come up with a vision that really benefits our children. The space that we have downstairs has become a special one for our kids, and I have a PowerPoint that's going to walk you through some of the things that we're doing. But as we were discussing after the kids were finished with their presentation, we're really just getting to the tip of what these kids can do. And it's them that showing us what it is that they want to spend their time on and finding that interconnectedness between curriculum and searching out ways to express themselves through journalism and a lot of the things that are going on in the science lab. About four years ago, we started Team Orchid here, which was a character education group that was about 12 5th graders hanging out with their principal in his office and trying to come up with ways to celebrate all the good things that were going on and to do some peer mediation and to address some of the bullying issues that we see. And over the years, we've found more and more that by giving kids an opportunity to look at the school not just as one student and their teacher and their peers in the classroom, but as a global environment where they get to celebrate the great things that are going on, social interviewing in kindergarten or second grade activities with parents or groups that are going outside to the garden. They're exposing themselves to instruction of K through 5, and they're also able to celebrate their peers' successes. And that is really great character education because it gives kids purpose and it gives them a lot of compassion, and at the same time, they're having an opportunity to learn and grow. I asked for a clicker, but I didn't get a clicker, so I'm going to be a little slow. So, we start, like I said, we started off as a character education group. The kids used to make posters and really try to call out to their peers to make really good decisions in school. And we would meet down in the basement, which is still a part of our library, but as you can see now, it's becoming a place off to the left where the kids really want to come down and collaborate. They work as teams. We have 12 teams of journalists in grades 4 and 5, teams of between 4 to 6 kids, and they take on stories and they see them through till the end. And on the other side, you can see that our K through 2 is really where science is, the hands-on piece is really starting to take off with Ms. Rosen as she comes in and gives kids, they've brought in great materials and giving kids chances to learn about water and soil and trees. On the left, these were MC squares that Darren Fatchalanga helped us bring in, and we really didn't know how we were going to use them at first. They're very, very cool. The kids love them because they mount to this big magnet mounting piece, and you can do art projects, you can do graphic organizers. But our reading group, our journalism group, actually found that we could use them, if you can see, it's hard to see, but that's a couple of teams up there. They know the story that they're working on, they know where they are inside of their draft, they know who's taking care of pictures, who's uploading things. The children are actually putting these stories onto the website, so if you go to the Baldwin website, the Plaza, and you find the Plaza Newsroom, there's close to 30 stories there from November till now, fully written by the children, pictures taken by the children, edited by the children, and put up onto the website by the children under, you know, with our supervision. And off to the right, you can see kindergarten. I don't know, Mrs. Wilder, is that your class? Working with, you know, trees and leaves and combining that with art. These are some pictures the kids took, and you know, they're covering literally everything. I mean, teachers come to them and say, they give them ideas for stories, but they're covering our assemblies, covering our kindergarten and K Thanksgiving feast. That's, those are kids from our fitness jamboree. Over here, you can see with the new technology downstairs, the kids have wireless connectivity between Microsoft services, we have 30 of them, and they're able to pull them out and to cast them onto the Epson boards. And so they can have children, it's dark in this picture, but children can be at the board editing as a part of the team while two kids are actually putting things up onto the website. So it really gives the kids a feel of, you know, being in a newsroom and working on a story. There's another science, younger kid, younger grades, but now our 4th grade has started on our indoor gardens. So those are down in the basement. We have three garden shelves, and we're working with Cornell Institute through Nomi Rosen, and they came in last week and helped us plant coleus and spider plants and different herbs and vegetables. And so we're, the kids are helping us water them, we're, you know, using, learning how to use the light. They're actually conducting experiments about what's going to grow faster in certain types of environments, so it's really great hands-on for them. And we do have the outdoor garden that we started last year, which is going to, I believe, double in size this year, and the kids are going to do a plant-a-row so that they can learn about growing something and giving back to the local pantries. And so as we find, the curriculum and the activism and the science all starts to continue to weave together. These are some examples. That is Mrs. Wilder's class. She had a firefighter come in and the kids were able to interview the firefighter using some of the social interviewing strategies that is building up in our kindergarten curriculum. And so again, like I discussed, we have older kids, 4th and 5th grade kids, going in and covering the story, but learning things at the same time. And on the other side, we had a class put on a class theater before the holidays, and the kids, basically, they cover everything here. We're also encouraging children to bring us stories from the outside, so we do have digital cameras that they can take home because we don't want the surfaces going home. Kids that go to museums over the weekend, or we actually had a 3rd grader who's been creating his own charity, and so we interviewed him and we, he was having a lemonade sale to raise money, and so we were able to celebrate that and help him get the word out with what he was trying to do. So we do encourage children, and as this grows, more and more kids are getting confident in doing some of those independent projects. We also have a mindfulness program here. Those are our student council elections, so the, you know, the kids were able to capture a lot of what happened during the student council elections, pictures of all of the kids talking. And this is a great outreach for, it's two things. It's one, it keeps the website growing, our new website growing, and it's great outreach for parents. I mean, the amount of access that parents now have, we actually take each of these pieces and put them out on Remind Me so that parents that are signed up on that can just go right to the link on their phone every time a story comes out. So they're getting really unprecedented access to what's going on during the school day. All of this, I was saying, happens during lunch. So the children are eating, and we try to encourage them not to eat too fast, and then they're rushing down to work with myself and the teachers. So they're giving up what a lot of people would say is the best part of a kid's school day, which is recess. And this is not just during the colder months. These kids come down there because they have an invested interest in writing for a purpose and working with their groups. So I'm really proud of them for finding something that they love enough to give up, you know, two or three lunches a week for. That's a picture of our new mural that the PTA brought to us, so all of the kids had a chance to paint it. That's down in the room, and it sort of gives the kids a feel of a cafe where they're looking out to the world and trying to come up with stories. And I mentioned in this slide kind of what I brought up in the beginning, that it's really become the best character education program that I think a principal could ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Does anyone here on the board have any questions or comments you want to share?
I just, we were privileged to have a tour with the kids prior to our board meeting. They were phenomenal, and I'm not just saying that because they're my daughter's classmates, but they did a prezi. I was thinking they probably should have did your presentation for you.
Yeah, probably.
They did a, there's a new thing called, well, not new, but they have the PowerPoint, and now they have the prezi, and the prezi's kind of like, it's very interactive. I mean, the kids were actually running the presentation. You had students at the board, and they had the people clicking to advance the present. It was just, it was, the kids are great. I mean, we have to continue to encourage them in this environment. It's no longer what we were doing as students. It's just nice to see that we're preparing them for what they're going to be facing in the future. They were phenomenal.
If I, and the thing that impresses me always, in addition to the academic things that they're learning and the technology that they're learning to use, the ability to do a presentation, the poise, the way they spoke, the way they introduced one another, oh, now you will hear from my friend, Suzie, who is going to tell you about this, and then that child would speak. Those skills are so impressive and will really be important as they go forward through every phase of their education and their work life eventually. But it was very, very impressive. It was wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, I'll chime in, and I agree with my colleagues. It's just, the entire thing was, the presentation was run by the students, and it was, it was so well-done, and they were just on and prepared and polite. It was, it was really great and impressive that elementary school kids are doing prezis when I've seen adults have, myself included, have problems trying to figure out how to do prezis. I think the mural downstairs is just incredible. It's such a great addition to this building, and it's just so colorful and bright, and you just look at it and you want to smile. So it's a great addition. And I mean, the other thing that I noticed was the pride that all of the students had in all of this work that they were doing and in presenting it to us. And when we left, they thanked us for coming. It was just, it was, it was really great, very well-done, so congratulations.
Kids are awesome. I'm a lucky guy. The kids are awesome.
Yeah.
I just want to add one thing, which probably nobody realizes, and that's that the space where this was created, prior to this being there, there's a kind of an open space, and then there's the behind-the-scenes space. And it was kind of unusable space, where it wasn't used innovatively, right? It was just, it was kind of like basement space that basement-type things happen. And when you go down there now, it doesn't feel like basement space anymore. I think a combination of the way that it's decorated, but really the way that it's designed. And, you know, a year ago, I kind of threw this out to people, and I want to give you credit, Mr. Gray, because you asked to redesign that space down there, and, you know, with very little guidance and watching how, we talked about this earlier, watching how the students were interacting with the space and then deciding that, you know, okay, this is working well, but I can work, it can work better if I, you know, add this or move that. And so it's an ongoing process, and your leadership was key in making that space work. So I appreciate that work.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted to say, learning is always supposed to be exciting, and for me, watching the excitement of the students, that just shows that they really love what they're doing. And as teachers and looking in the classroom, it must be exciting for the teachers as well based on how the setup is, so kudos to you on that for making this an environment that brings excitement because we tend to forget about the excitement you're supposed to have while you're learning, and it was great to see that in the kids as well.
And I'll turn the credit right around to all the teachers that really, the team that we had here working with these kids and have working with these kids are awesome, so thanks for giving me great teachers.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent's report. A bunch of things to report, we'll go quick. One thing I'm particularly personally proud of, we have a student who was accepted as an intern at WCWP, which is CW Post radio station. They mostly intern college students, but we have a high school student who was accepted as an intern and what, I received a letter from the director of the radio station where he spoke about our student and how the student interviewed and how impressive of a resume our student had. This is just one example of feedback that we get like that all the time, but it is definitely something to be proud of. Our middle school students and our Meadow students have created a native Long Island garden between the two buildings. They, that's going to be an ongoing project, and that's being done with Sea Talk Education, so stay tuned for that. But it was a, it was a really, really cold day, but it was a pleasure to be there with our kids and to see our middle school kids and our elementary kids working together to create something in the shared space between their buildings. And again, that is going to tie in with the science curriculum in Meadow. We had another school-to-career breakfast and mentoring breakfast. Those are two of Baldwin's signature programs, and this is my third year here. I am never at a disappointment. They do a phenomenal job. Our mentoring program is probably the biggest mentoring program definitely on Long Island, and the dedication on the part of our staff to our students is really commendable. The school-to-career breakfast, all you have to do is listen to our kids talk about the experiences they had. I was at a shadow day today at LIJ Valley Stream. They keep changing the names, so it's kind of hard to stick with it, but, and, and, you know, they're with radiologists, they're with nutritionists, they're with, you know, pediatric oncologist, they're just with, you know, the most amazing professional people there. And the day always ends with those folks talking about how incredible our kids are. Ms. White, who is the Director of Community Relations, spoke today, and I mentioned how wonderful our kids are, and she came up afterwards and she said, you know, I know I spoke already, but I have to echo what Dr. Kami said. You know, we've been hosting Baldwin kids, this is our fourth year, and they impress us every single time, you know? And there's, there's almost nothing that you can do better for public relations than have student ambassadors out in the community, so it is definitely something to be proud of. One of the things I promised our community when I came here was that in a short time, we would start being examples to other districts. And I'm proud to let you know that the Seaford School District came to visit Baldwin. They specifically came to Lenox to see what we were doing in terms of writer's workshop. They came, they visited our classrooms, they spoke with our teachers, and they left really excited, knowing a lot more than when they came, and feeling pretty impressed by the work that our schools and teachers are doing in terms of reader's workshop with our kids. So it's nice to be recognized by other community school districts. We recently visited Google in New York City, so if you're following me on Instagram, I'm up to like 178 people, so proud of that. I feel like I'm trending. It's a low bar, I get that. But we, there were about six of us who went to Google, and we met with some of the folks from Google. We also, we had, we had an opportunity to see what their workspaces looked like, right? Because one of the things that we feel very strongly about is that if we are preparing kids to move into the world of work, that the environments in which our kids work in in schools should in some respect mirror the kinds of environments that they will, that they will experience when they, when they go to work. So we, we actually left Baldwin at 8 o'clock in the morning, and we didn't get back till 4:30 in the afternoon. It was, it was, and the majority of that day was spent actually in Google. We visited, they currently have two huge buildings in the city near Chelsea Market, and they're building a third from scratch, building right next to Chelsea Pier on the water. They are really taking over Chelsea. And to real, to see the kind of environment, not just the technology, but the physical space in which these young people work, and I do mean young people, was really very telling, and it was very informative for us because we take that seriously. So it is very hard to get into Google. You have to know someone who has connections to get you in, and it was actually a connection that we have with the folks from Office Depot, and they accompanied us. They, some of them flew in from Austin, Texas to do this visit with us, but it was impressive, and we are hoping to have, to develop a relationship with Google as a company going forward. We'll see, we'll see where that goes. But that was, that was pretty exciting. Just a reminder, it is definitely cold and flu season, so to please make sure that you are washing your hands and coughing into the crease of your arm. There are lots of people sick everywhere, not just in Baldwin, but everywhere. So we did circulate flyers by Connect Ed last week. We're just asking all of our parents to be diligent and making sure that they and their kids stick to good sanitary conditions so that we can try and reduce illness in our district. Tomorrow night is the Martin Luther King celebration at the high school. It is really phenomenal, and so if you have an opportunity to come, please do. Two last kudos. Baldwin High School students, Dalen Jorif and Asia Thomas have been selected as all, Asia Thomas, have been selected as all Eastern Vocalists in the National Association for Music Educators Eastern Division Conference being held in Atlantic City from April 5th to the 8th. Our students will represent Baldwin and New York State in this prestigious conference, which is held only every two years. 51 Baldwin students from each of the district schools, elementary through high school, will participate in the NMEA Hall County Music Festival with performances by division this month. Of those students, 21 are from the high school, three, and three are from the same family. Aurora Wojcik. Wojcik, a 7th grader at Baldwin Middle School, will play double bass in the orchestra. Summer Wojcik, a 9th grader at Baldwin High School, will play viola in the orchestra. And Sierra Wojcik, a senior invaledictorian at Baldwin High School, will sing alto in the mixed chorus. Congratulations to that. That's my report.
Thank you. I would, I told this to Mrs. Hobbs, the Wojcik name, you should stick that one on the wall. You're going to be saying that for the next few years, I think. Very talented kids. All right, now, it's here. Okay, comments from the Board of Education. I'm going to start on my, did I start, I started on the left last time? I don't remember. I'll start on the right this time. Mrs. Reed, anything you'd like to share?
I don't have anything.
No.
Just Happy New Year to everybody.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Happy New Year, everyone.
Mrs. Coles?
I would like to just say that I'm so proud of everything going on in this district, and you know, when Dr. Kami talks about things like the Google visit and the different things that she does and conferences that she goes to, it's so important because these are the things that are going to put our school district on a national level. And of course, that's what we want, and our kids are so proud of all the things that they're doing. They're so excited and enthusiastic, and I'm just so proud to be a part of it. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
The one thing I was going to mention that I thought everybody was going to mention that right before, we all took turns attending the winter concerts, and they were absolutely amazing. They were really, the high school, the level of play, the complexity of the music, the sophistication of the compositions is extraordinary, and it really is impressive when you hear the kids. And then when you go and you hear the elementary concerts, you see the growth. You see how they're going to sound in just a few years. So that was really, really nice. Excuse me. I never get a call, so I'm going to, I'm not going to answer it, but I am going to turn this off. The other thing I was going to say is that this morning, I was at a meeting at the Long Island Education Coalition, and if you pay attention to such things, you know that in January, the governor does a state-of-the-state report, and he has opted this year to do a series of regional meetings as opposed to addressing the legislature. And he did those, one of those meetings on Long Island this week. These are our quote-unquote "public" meetings. Three or four of the people at the Long Island Education Coalition this morning have been able to get into the Long Island meeting. It's interesting that those meetings are extremely difficult to get a seat at. We had one person who called and said that the vetting, the information that had to be provided, the picture IDs, the, you know, you just had to swear that you didn't belong to any group that was going to ask him a question.
That leaves us out.
And it's, it's, it just says a great deal. He scheduled these things while the legislature was in session, which meant that no one from no local legislators would be there to question him, to ask anything. And it just, it says something about the transparency of this report. And... And there was no discussion whatsoever on the subject of education. He did talk about, as you probably read in the paper, all of the infrastructure plans that he has for Long Island. If that works, that will be just great. But he did not have anything to say about education. And his report on the budget, which is also supposed to be presented by, I think, next week, the word is that he is not going to do that in person either, but simply going to submit paperwork to the legislature and then just kind of let the chips fall where they may. So it's interesting and you really have to pay attention to some of these things to understand what's going on. So anyway, that was what I did this morning.
Okay. Just, I guess because it was a good break in between our last meeting and this one, that the winter break, which I hope you all enjoyed and happy new year. I was at a couple of the high school concerts. I echo what Mrs. O'Hagan said about them. Just incredible, incredible talent, as was indicated by the number of kids we have in all county. We have all state, all eastern, a couple in all national this year. And then over the break, I went to a couple of the basketball games at the tournament at the high school that was going on. I caught the boys' final and the girls' final, both our teams won. The boys' game was close, the girls' game not so much. They won by a lot and actually I think in the fourth quarter, it was all second string and they still maintained a hefty margin. And then they went, the girls' team went on to beat Osining, which was, I think, defending state champion in the tournament upstate. So I think we have some good things to look forward to out of our basketball teams and probably the other teams that I'm just not aware of at this point. All right, moving on. We are now at our first comment and question session. For this first comment session, if you have questions or comments, they can only be on agenda items during this first period. The period is up to 30 minutes. Everyone who comes to speak gets to speak for up to three minutes. One person per, one person, you can speak once during this comment period. We do not during these open sessions discuss students, we don't discuss individual students or personnel. I ask you to address your questions or comments to me if you have them and to be, if you're going to address us, we ask that you do so in a respectful manner. So with that, I think I covered all the details. I will open the mic up for comments or questions if anyone has any.
I wasn't going to say anything for as long as Mrs. O'Hagan puts the governor on. I just want to point out that in the paper today, he also said that he's trying to do as much as he can to limit taxes, we know how to present a tax gap. But local governments, you can't, local governments are crushing New York State. And of course, the local government that's most offensive are the school districts. Sixty to seventy percent of our property taxes are caused by the local school district. And so we can see the board members animosity to the governor, but he's trying to push back on the abuses that are centered in suburban counties of New York, which are just crushing. And I can see it on my clock, their taxes are more than their mortgage payments, they're taking in borders, that their cousins are moving in. Nice people, that's all right, but it's not the intent of this school district. So what you can do really to help the people here and who you're proud of your program, it's a very expensive program and you're proud of the schools, but they're very poor students. And we're doing it at twice the cost that other school districts are doing. Of course, this is a large school district in Long Island, they're bored as the luxury of having a digital program, but they're consolidated school districts all over the country. And they're doing just what you're doing and their students are going to their state colleges at half the cost. And we have the local private schools that are doing it at half or two-thirds the cost, which of course, your cost or your personnel. So you need to push back, you need to push back there locally because you're really hurting Nassau County, Nassau County's growth, a lot because of the assessment challenges, which I'm sure you are very familiar with. And assessment challenges aren't the way for people to lower the taxes. The way to lower the taxes, which is hurting our community, is to lower the budget and it's going to be a lot better with a lot less, to push back on our costs, which are salary competitive.
Thank you, Mr. Kugelmas.
Hi, Dr. Mason. Just off the deck, we're going to talk to you about a few more, I do, last week, I'd like to know if you have concerns for the kids traveling and you've got to take care of them, and I'm glad you're very appreciative. It's not really that, it doesn't matter what it was for our kids, it doesn't matter what group of our kids, you've got to really come through with them. You care about them, it doesn't matter what they're into. I always say, whatever kids do, that's what's important. So whatever it is, you've got to come through.
Thank you, Mrs. White. All right, seeing no one else at the mic, we're going to end this first comment period and move on. There will be another comment period at the end, for those who are interested. Okay, Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report for January 11, 2017, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dreska. Since this contains the names of individual staff members, we don't discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the Recommendations for Services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-CE 504 Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education in October, November, and December 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Again, this contains information pertaining to individual students, so we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dreska. Again, this contains information pertaining to individual students, so we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation from the estate of William B. Goodwin in the amount of $250 to be used for the Golden Wave, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments?
Just a thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the intermunicipal agreement with Nassau County and the Baldwin Union Free School District for an $81,000, $81,250 grant to purchase and install an electronic sign at the Grand Avenue entrance to Baldwin High School to inform the community of meetings, events, and public safety information, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs.
Everybody.
O'Hagan, I'll go.
By everybody.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is just for here, but it was $81,250.
I was just wondering if Dr. Kami could just give some information on this sign?
What's it look like? So as I'm sure all of you know, there's a sign on Grand Avenue. The sign's been off since the beginning of the school year because it no longer works and is old enough to not be able to be repaired. The software for that sits, it resides on a computer all by itself and it has been challenging for a number of years. So we are in the process of identifying a new sign that's going to go on Grand Avenue to alert the community of all of our school district events, but also to, you know, God forbid, in the case of a Sandy-like event, to be able to inform the community of something like that again. So we are in the process of securing, doing all the necessary paperwork, which takes a long time and, but simultaneously, we've been looking at what products would meet our needs. What we're trying to do is make sure that whatever we get is a multi-function solution to a larger, like video distribution kind of a system. So, you know, I've been ready for a while now and, you know, we are definitely well on our way and the community, I believe, will be very happy with the sign that we eventually put on Grand Avenue. People will know Baldwin High School is there.
Is it going to be a welcome to Hollywood kind of thing? Welcome to Hollywood.
And just to be clear, Dr. Kami, the funds for this were obtained through a grant and not anything taken from our budget, correct?
Correct. It's not yet purchased, so, but this grant is going toward the purchase of that sign.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Yes, this is very good. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the Payment of Health and Welfare Service Contracts in the 2012-13 and 2013-14 school years with the following district, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So for, well, it's both with Mineola Union Free School District. For 2012-13, there were two students at a cost of $580 per student for a total of $1,196. In 2013-14, there was one student and the cost per pupil was $630, so for a total of $630.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the Agreement with Deana Alardo, Notary Public Central Incorporated, to provide instruction of a three-hour notary public training course to continuing education students at a rate of $50 per student, not to exceed $2,000, for the 2016-17 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dreska, second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education approves the Agreement with the Long Island Home DBA South Oaks Hospital to provide transition services for the 2016-17 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the Business Associate Agreement with Dr. Richard Navon, M.D., to provide evaluation services for the 2016-17 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves contracts for the approved special education programs based upon the strategic evaluation, data collection, and analysis and reporting said CAR I applications and their corresponding 10, 7, 15 child count. The per pupil allocation for students placed in a program under Section 619, three to five-year-olds, is $431 and for Section 611, three to 21-year-olds, is $1,109. Per pupil allocation for students receiving related services only under Section 619 is $144 and for Section 611 is $371, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reed. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education declares obsolete books from the high school, which are outdated and no longer part of the curriculum per state rules and regulations, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments? I had a comment, it just struck me in the heart. Huck Finn and Fahrenheit 451 are outdated.
I thought the same thing. Does that mean they're not being taught anymore?
Well, so Fahrenheit 451, there's a total of nine books.
I know, but I mean.
Which means that they're just damaged books.
Yeah, but I mean, would we have other copies of them?
It's possible that we do, but as we move toward a common core curriculum, the literature is changing as well.
Moment of silence. Fahrenheit 451.
No, no, for Huck.
For Huck Finn as well.
I wouldn't say we're not teaching Huck Finn.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that either. I would not like to say, well, there was a whole bunch of them on that.
Yeah. I just picked out a few that struck me, that stuck out. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education declares obsolete biology textbooks from the high school, which are outdated and unusable per state rules and regulations, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Questions or comments? No similar emotional feeling for the biology textbook?
Not as much as I am to wildlife literature.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education declares obsolete technology equipment from the high school and district office, which are beyond repair and stripped of any useful parts per state rules and regulations, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education approves the Updated Use of Facilities Report for the 2016-17 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments?
I know.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board of Education approves the New Course Proposal for Advanced Placement Human Geography for the 2017-18 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
I did too. Well, go ahead.
My question is, I'm fascinated, by the way, by this course. And is it, is it like anthropology? I'm looking at.
The course studies like population growth, the effects of populations in society, the ways societies change to accommodate that mass growth.
Is this a new course, like in general, new for the AP?
No, it's been around for a while. I think it's just becoming more and more adopted by a lot of school districts. The nice thing about this course is in time we'll be able to have our ninth graders take it, because it's not a more difficult AP course. So it's a great way to get students introduced into advanced placement programs and the rigors of it, but not being too far reaching in their potential. So we find that ninth graders do pretty well in that course and often can start earning that college credit in ninth grade already. So ultimately, we wanted to get it down to ninth grade as well.
Sounds like a great course.
Just before, I want to let you comment, but so ninth grade, so would this be sort of an alternative to, I think, is it AP World that the ninth grader just takes now?
No, it would be conjunction two, it's not alternative.
And this is for 11th and 12th graders.
For now, but I guess, but when you're talking about bringing it down to ninth grade.
No, because they still need to take the global regions and that pre-AP and AP World history will cover the curriculum for the global regions.
Okay.
It's not in lieu of.
Okay.
But it is part of the initiative of giving our kids the ability to take more, more.
No, I think it's great. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Board of Education approves the Calendar for the 2017-18 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coles. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure for December 22nd, should that have been highlighted or should it not have been highlighted? Because it's mentioned in the bottom as part of the winter recess, but it's not shaded in on top, so I don't know, does that mean that it's not?
It's not part of the recess.
So it should be, so it should probably say what, the 25th?
Yes.
Okay. We just have to change that, okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Help me remember, do we always start school on the Tuesday after Labor Day?
So every calendar is different and some years pose more of a challenge than other years. In this calendar, our teachers come back on September 1st, which is the Friday before Labor Day, and our students come back on the 5th. And again, that's driven by a contractual 184 school day.
Perfect. Okay, that's all I have.
Mark that down, those of you who are looking for the first day of school, September 5th.
It'll be posted.
Now, some people want to know, like, as soon as possible.
Scheduling the vacation right now.
It doesn't, it's not.
We have school.
Did we do, did we vote?
On that, Mary? No.
No, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, excellent. Does anyone have anything under other?
Are you serious? No.
No.
That's one.
Okay, nothing under other? All right, so then that brings us to our second comment period. Oh, before we do that, let's forget, important dates. So tomorrow, as Dr. Kami mentioned, the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. So tomorrow, as Dr. Kami mentioned, the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration at the high school at 7:30. Schools are closed on Monday, this coming Monday, January 16th, for the Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Holiday. We have our Board of Education, our second community input, excuse me, input meeting and PTA reflections reception, Wednesday, January 25th, at 8:00 p.m. at the middle school. And I believe we'll have a little performance from the Middle School Musical there, so you don't want to miss that. Our first Board of Education Budget Work Session is Wednesday, February 1st, at 8:00 at the district office.
I'll go first.
And our second Budget Work Session and our next regular Board of Education meeting are Wednesday, February 8th. The Budget Work Session begins at 7:00 p.m. The regular board meeting will begin at 8:00 p.m. And both at, that's at the district office. Okay, now, now I can open the floor to comment period two. Similar to the first comment period, this is timed to last no more than 30 minutes. Again, people come up to speak, can speak for up to three minutes. There is no limit on the subject matter that can be addressed during this comment period. We ask that you address any of your questions to me when you do so, and that you do so respectfully. Again, we do not discuss individual students or staff members. So, at this point, I will open the microphone to comment period two.
Can you get to the mic?
Hello? And I'm sorry, please give us your name and address so that we can get back to you if we need to.
Somebody please, I'm, 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 other than, like, more than Baldwin. So, after I got them, like, meetings, it was electrically informed, I feel like, what I was trying to get across was expressed properly, so like, if you, like, if it's a mob stream, like, please, I, 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 but, just ask for your, I want you to tell me, like, are teachers, like, talking classroom, or?
The board members, or?
Yes. Just, all of you sitting there, have any of you were ever here to talk in the classroom?
We have one.
All of us, or just board members?
Board members.
Just the board members? So, there's five of us are board members, and then?
There's two. This is O'Hagan talking.
Yeah, I talked for a little while, yeah.
The five of us here, myself, and then two women to my right, and then Mrs. O'Hagan, Mrs. Coles, are board members. Everyone else is a member of the administration, just to make the distinction.
Yeah, like, the whole piece.
The whole table, okay. Raise your hand if you've talked.
Okay, thanks. Oh, that was, like, a few, um, I kind of wanted to address what happened in, in, like, evacuation scenario, like, you probably know what happened on Monday with the high school and the whole, like, talking classroom. Yeah, that was terrible. Um, like, cut and dry, I feel like that could have gone a lot better, a lot of the ways. Um, I know that obviously, we're supposed to, 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 like, make sure that everyone's getting, or bringing the back in, but you were out in the cold, so, I, 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 like, that time, like, three years, over an hour, and no one was really informed, no one was happening, everyone was calling their parents, and it was just, like, chaos all over. You were just out in the cold, like, and leave the school, and everyone was just wandering about, trying to, like, figure out what's happening, it was just mess all over. So, I wanted to know what, like, the protocol for, and areas like that.
I'm going to turn this over to Dr. O'Hagan.
So, let me start by saying that any time, things can always be improved. There was also a lot of misinformation. So, as students were getting on their phones to their parents, you know, I don't know if, when you were younger, you ever played the game of telephone, but when you play the, right, so you know the game of telephone, right? It starts here, it ends here, and, and the truth gets somewhere lost in between. There was never a gas leak. There was a, a burning smell, and there was a, a, there were, there were people in the building who were trying to identify where that was.